Good morning, and welcome to the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, July the 25th. And before we do roll call, Madam Clerk, I would like to say happy anniversary to my wife today for forty-eight years. You roll call, please.
Yes. Commissioner Howard?
I don't know how to follow that.
Present.
Commissioner Wade Meyer?
Present.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
And Chair Renaud?
Present. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, follow by our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this time, Lord, we have here together, together in this place. And I pray, God, you just speak to our hearts, Lord, and show us what you have us saying, what you have us to do, and guide and direct, and have your way, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, anything under correspondence and organization, Mr. Derrick? Public comment? We have somebody signed up?
Yes.
Okay, Gene Hurt. Gene?
Our citizens are going to speak on an item not on the agenda, may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Please state your name and address, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Gene Hurt, I'm at 219 West Fourth Street in Menzies, Kansas. Been awhile since I've addressed the commission, but I feel I need to today on a number of issues, not just public comment today. Okay, the first thing I want to say is, on last Saturday's paper, on page ten, this is your deal on your taxes that are out outstanding on tracts of property. And this is the first time I've ever seen the county unfortunately have to go after these people on these tracts of land. But you've got money here that is due to you, that's been for a long time, and it's from all over. Monah, all the towns, Rantoul, all of that. And this is the first time, like I said again, this is the first time I've ever seen this being done. And unfortunately, you have to do this, because these funds, the total, I don't know what the grand total is of all this together, to be collected, but this is a large sum of money. And I hope that everybody out there, or them, that you'll be able to collect this money without having to have the sales. But this is an important thing that needs to be taken care of. Okay? Now, the second thing is, last night, there's one thing I've got, and this is to praise this commission right now, there were some comments made by an individual that stated that you had lacked in sixteen or so meetings that you've not had in the past here. And to me, I don't want to go back to the old ways, because you guys are taking care of business now. And that was a misstatement, as far as I'm concerned, and I have to say it. You guys, why should you have meetings if you're taking care of business? Because years ago, they didn't, as far as I was concerned, and now you are. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. On our consent agenda today, we have to consider approval of Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for July the eighteenth. There are no claim vouchers, no tax change orders. Make the motion, we approve the commission meeting minutes for July eighteenth.
Second.
Commissioner Wade Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes.
Okay, going to our first item of business, consider an approval for entering into a new agreement with Aetna, Medicare, Medicaid provider agreement. Midge?
Good morning. This year, Kansas Medicaid reissued applications for the managing companies, or the insurance companies that will be providing Medicaid billing services and payment services to providers. In place of AmeriGroup, the state elected to use Aetna and retain United and the Sunfire Group, which is Centene, as Medicaid companies for us. So, that requires a new contract with Aetna to continue to provide those Medicaid services to anyone who enrolls in their program. So, this is a relatively standard contract with, you know, billing requirements and policy requirements and so forth. So, I would just request that we accept this contract to continue our Medicaid services.
Okay. I'm sure some of our constituents and people in this county have Aetna, so that would be...
We haven't been able to bill privately to Aetna, but we will be able to bill the Medicaid side.
I'd make a motion to approve entering to the new agreement with Aetna Medicaid provider agreement. Second.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade Meyer?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes. Thank you, Midge.
Thank you.
Okay, our second item for business this morning is consider for approval of the Kansas Department of Corrections revised fiscal year 2019 behavioral health grant and budget in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, thirty-six dollars and forty-four cents. Allison?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm before you today to present with a grant that we had been awarded, but they did, the Kansas Department of Corrections decided to take, to give us a reduction on that of about twenty thousand dollars. We are still implementing the behavioral health grant, which addresses the mental health and substance abuse needs of the clients in our community. And so, with that reduction, we are reducing the amount that we can put towards our better intervention program. We will be still having that in our community, but at this point, we'll just see a reduction in funds in that area.
Okay, and the amount of the grant reduction on this one was?
Twenty thousand, four hundred and five.
It was, yes. And we're looking at, that was about a reduction of about nineteen thousand, which we had projected that we had requested, or nineteen percent.
Any questions in for Allison about the budget that it will be affecting?
That's unfortunate that we're losing those funds, and hopefully, we can still make a difference in that program and still provide the services needed.
Correct, and we will. We still have it available. We'll just have to be more selective on the clients that are entered into it.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised fiscal year 2019 Kansas Department of Corrections Community Correction Behavioral Health budget amount of eighty-seven thousand, thirty-six dollars, forty-four cents.
Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes.
Okay, Allison, our next item of business then is consider for approval of the revised fiscal year 2019 adult budget for the Kansas Department of Corrections, adult services in the amount of four hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents.
Yes, we received word that they were, the Kansas Department of Corrections is going to reduce our adult operational budget. The budget reduction is seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. For our agency, this is something that we have been able to accommodate with reducing what our drug tests, the package is for a drug testing, and that some of the services we'll be able to cover in another area. But because of that reduction, we did have to cut the drug testing supplies.
Any questions else for Allison? Percentage wise, it's not so bad compared to the other one, but...
Yeah, it's a two percent reduction.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the revised fiscal year 2019 budget narrative for the Kansas Department of Corrections, adult services in the amount of four hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Okay, the next item on our agenda, consider for approval of replacement of IBM services server, Dustin. And Derrick, we have public comment on this, so after we get through this, appropriate time, we'll do the public comment?
We can let...
Let Dustin say?
Why don't you introduce the item and then do a public comment?
Well, gentlemen, this is just a replacement of the system that handles our tax, payroll, finance management, several of those type of business applications for us. We reviewed in 2015, moving this to a Windows-based platform, and determined at that time, it wasn't physically responsible to do so. So, we are now at a point where this system was projected to last five to seven years, it has now been in place for about nine. It was put in in the second quarter of 2009. I believe the commission approved that on March fourth of '09, to move forward with that project initially. So, it's time to replace it. The current hardware can't be upgraded any longer, and we're going to run into problems continuing to stay current with the software that we have. So, what you have here is proposals that was put together by our finance management software vendor, Thompson Reuters, for their services, and then a subcontractor that they'd used as the serious computer solutions, which we also use for our networking hardware as well. So, those are proposals that you have in front of you.
Okay. Gene Hurt, your public comment?
The reason I signed up on this for Dustin and to make a statement is, I think this is time for this to be done as well. But now, I also state, not only for that server, but for the equipment inside this room, and to move it to a better place and electronics and so forth. I know Dustin would love to have some better equipment in here. I hope that maybe some of the taxes that you'll collect, from what I brought up on the public comment, could be used, the twenty-six thousand dollars is what he's, which he's asking for here, would also be for help for this, in this room. Thank you.
All right, any questions for Dustin?
One thing I would add on this, and I appreciate this about Dustin, and I think it kind of matches our philosophy well. That Windows-based system that we looked at, it was pretty. I mean, and, but it was also super expensive. The system that we're upgrading to is certainly more meat and potatoes, but it's very efficient, and it's a much better use of taxpayer dollars. With the Windows system, I mean, there would have been some conveniences associated with Windows, but at a, I mean, the cost was what? Substantially higher, and so, this is a system that, our users already know basically how to use it. It's got the, you know, the black screens instead of a, you know, I guess a prettier format to look at, but it's, it's just, in my opinion, a much more responsible use of taxpayer dollars.
Is the system pretty? No. However, it is doing everything that we need it to do, and I think it can do more than what we're currently doing. We can invest our money in training to go ahead and write queries to run the reports and get the information out of. I think we do a great job of collecting information. We've just got used to using that certain report rather than looking at creating new reports to meet the needs that we have today, and I think we can do all that with this existing system. It just will always be a green screen with lines and blocks rather than nice, pretty corners and colors.
Does the lifespan, again, five to seven years?
I would expect five to seven out of it, as well as a reasonable length of time for this. It really depends on what the software, the operating system lifecycle is again. We expected five to seven out of the existing system, and we're sitting at nine now, before it hit end of life, or we couldn't do anything more with it. So, I'll say five to seven, but it is reasonable that we may get more than that. We'll keep a hardware support contract on it, so if parts fail, they'll be replaced, and the system will be maintained that way.
So, is there a trade-in value for the unit we currently?
There's not. There's not. We'll end up wiping all the information off of that and listing that on Purple Wave for any recovery of monies that we can do that way.
And there's no value in redundancy as a backup, because if it's outdated again?
Not really on this type of system, correct.
So...
I just got one comment before we go on this. I think addressing what Gene said, about the equipment in this room, I think Gene was going a lot on, last night at the forum, there was some issues to start with. They were using these mics up here, and some of the candidates weren't aware, and they were up against the mics pretty close, and it was tough to understand them, but once Dustin and everybody got convinced to back off from the mics a little bit, it was fine, I thought, after that. But to start with, when they were up too close, it was a little bit of a problem, but then, once they got back away from them, it was, it was not an issue.
That's a project that I can put together and show you guys what it looks like. If we want to go that way, that's not a problem to do. If nothing else, he'll give us a planning tool so that we're aware of what we're looking at.
Maybe have a bigger, we're getting off topic, but conversation about, I don't know, if we'd want to ever consider using the old courtroom for meetings.
You're talking about in the old courthouse?
Yeah.
We can, that will be a challenge for the technology.
Sure, yeah, I know it would be, but...
We can make anything happen, though.
But if we're looking at spending money, I don't know.
Yeah, we can make anything happen.
Okay. I like that attitude from employees.
I didn't say it'll be cheap, I just said we can make anything happen.
Okay, any other questions in about the replacement of the IBM iSeries server? Not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the replacement of the IBM server.
Second.
Commissioner Wade Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, the next item for, consider for approval submitting an application to KDOT's all-system bridge program to replace Bridge number sixteen dot six dash twelve dot one.
Good morning, Commissioners. KDOT is accepting applications for their off-system bridge program, which we've had some success with. Bridge sixteen point six dash twelve point one, fracture critical trust with three approach spans that is eligible to be replaced. Total estimated cost of eligible items is one million, eighty-one thousand, one hundred and five dollars. The local share would be two hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars, and KDOT's share would be eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. This would be a fiscal year 2020 project.
Okay. We have a public comment on this one as well, if you want to do it now, Derrick? Okay, Gene?
After reviewing on the internet, when I saw this was coming on to the agenda today, I reviewed my maps. See, I got maps of all the bridges, state and Franklin County bridges from years ago. I've got all those maps of every bridge. And this is one of the bridges that I brought forth many years ago to this commission that was in dire need, dire need, being fixed. So, this is, of this one here, of sixteen point six dash twelve point one, I am glad to see now on Osborne, I would hope that it will be submitted to KDOT, that you replace this bridge, because it is in dire need. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Jim, what we're doing then is submitting a request, submitting an application to get the funds to do that. Okay. Any other questions for Jim on that project? Or Jim, any other comments you wish to make?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the submit of the application to KDOT off-system bridge program to replace Bridge number sixteen dot point six dash twelve point one.
Second.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade Meyer?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes.
Okay, and the next item then, consider for approval holding a public hearing on August the eighth, to consider vacating Arkansas Road north of K-31.
The department has received a request from the three property owners adjacent to the one hundred block of Arkansas Road, requesting it be vacated. Request results from reoccurring difficulties of trespass, poaching, theft, vandalism, and trash dumping. In order to vacate a road, it's necessary to hold a public hearing.
Okay, I also have a public comment on this. Gene, you want to come make your comment?
I know Mary Ann Collins, and I know Rick does know Mary Ann Collins, and I'm very familiar with down there in that area, from the years that I've lived down there by Emerald Catholic Church and so forth. I'm surprised that this road hasn't been, had a hearing on before, because this really needs to be taken care of, and so, I'm really glad to see that now, the property owners and with the land people are going to, and you're going to hopefully give them an opportunity to have a hearing on this, for vacating this road. Thank you very much.
Jim, I know it says the one hundred block of Arkansas Road, and I looked at the map, and it said it came to a dead end. Are we talking about a full mile?
No, sir.
Pardon?
It's a half mile.
Half mile. A half mile road, okay.
It did ends at a gate. One of the property owners has signed the letter, says he has no use for using that gate, he has access to it off Colorado.
You got other questions for Jim about holding the public hearing on August the eighth?
Maybe it's California.
Huh?
Maybe it's California, Rick.
You had me a little lit, like, how did he get that back there from Colo, or?
No, it's Cal, it's California.
Okay, I can go that one.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion stating a public hearing for August eighth, 2018, to vacate Arkansas Road north of K-31.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, that takes us to staff reports. Derrick?
Yeah, as part of our recent budget discussion, we talked a little bit about our capital needs, and where we're at with our reserves. Just want to let the board know, I've asked my maintenance director to start putting together a request for proposals for replacement of the adult detention centers, HVAC. The fact that it would cost us fifty to sixty thousand dollars to run that if it broke down today, because we're here without a plan, that's enough money, and we know, we know it's going to need to be replaced. Obviously, the final decision to do so, I'll bring to you, but I think, I don't think I can recommend waiting until it breaks down and incurring that cost when we're patching the system together as it is. And so, we're working right now on putting that RFP together. Hopefully, we'll get competitive bids, and certainly, we'll bring the RFP to you, and you will be a part of the process every step of the way. Proximity Park, we haven't talked about it for a while, but it's, you know, it's coming along nicely out there. One of the things that Joy and I have been working on, and admittedly, it's challenging, we're trying to find out what the rest of our costs are going to be, or at least in approximation, because we know we're going to have to do a second bond issue, and we're trying to ascertain what the amount of that will be. Now, I will tell you what we're finding, and Jim has been a great resource as well. I don't think it's going to need to be nearly as big as the first one. I think so far, we've done very well. The bids for the construction of the roads and storm sewer were so much lower than we were anticipating. We got the land at a pretty good cost. I mean, I, I think it is going to come in appreciably under what we were anticipating, but just know that's something we're currently working on. We're starting to get the bills for the, the road construction. My inclination, I mean, I've got one sitting on my desk for somewhere around a quarter million dollars. My inclination is to bring those to you and let you see them, and, and I understand, you've given me the authority to, to execute those, but given the immense amount of money, I, I feel like allowing, you know, discussing it publicly, and certainly, it's something we're committed to doing, but if you feel differently, certainly let me know, but bills of, it's just a standard road construction bill, but it's, you know, that, that's a large sum of money, and so, I will probably bring that. Again, there's not necessarily even a decision to be made, it's just something for you to look at and see as we incur these costs and pay them exactly what, what we're paying for. And with that, I don't have anything else this morning.
I don't, I don't know if this would be a possibility or not, Derrick, but the construction company that has a bid on that project, if one of their people would maybe give us a report on how, you think that's something, or maybe, I don't know, maybe, Jim? I'm just thinking of, hey, here's where we're at, here's what we've done, this is what was going, from somebody that's actually on site, maybe?
We're, we're paying Bartlett and Wes.
And if they, they might be the one to come in and say that?
Yeah, I...
Just, you know, I know they've done a lot of work, and they got the road closed, and it'd just be kind of nice, maybe, to get a, a picture of where we're at.
I, I will get, you've met him several times, Darren Ammon?
Yep.
Would be the guy to bring in, and I will get him in here. I think that's a great idea. So, we'll get him in here and get us an update on that. Yeah, would love to.
Because, you know, if we're looking at the bills, and he can, you know, verify, well, this is what has taken place and so forth, okay, great.
Derrick, I just want to say, I, I fully am in support of trying to figure out a way to solve the HVAC problem there in advance. If we have to spend that fifty thousand, that's just fifty thousand down the drain that we're never going to see, and, and I think we need to be proactive instead of reactive in that situation. It's, it's the best use of taxpayer money.
Well, and, and near as I can tell, and I've got to rely on my maintenance director here and historical knowledge, we've been piecing these together for years. Like, this isn't something that we've just started, that have just kind of started being an issue, and so, I mean, I think I could have argued pretty convincingly that this should have been done before I even started at the county. I mean, these systems need replaced, and so, so, yeah, I, I appreciate that sentiment for sure.
Okay, Dustin, anything else?
No, sir.
Anything in the Sheriff's Department? Allison? Everybody else back there? No questions for her? We do appreciate the prayer pause report that you give us each time, and being here to, if we have questions for you, appreciate that. Jim, anything else?
I contacted Vance Brothers earlier this week. They're awaiting the delivery of the remainder of the covering material before they start. They like to have, they would like to have it all on hand, so we don't run into a situation like we did last year, where they do part, and then move out, and then have to move back in.
Okay. Clerk's office, ready for the election, huh?
We are. We started Monday, early voting.
Okay, you have a very few come in, so I mean, we started Monday.
I think we've had forty-some people.
Come in for...
Monday, I think we had twenty-one, and...
Are they going to be open any Saturday?
We're going to be open August the fourth. We're going to be open August the fourth from nine to noon.
August four, nine to noon.
Mm-hmm.
For people who want to come in and, all right, Saturday. Okay? Okay, that takes us to Commissioner comments and Board reports.
I haven't been anything I did attend the forum last night. I was, a lot of the offices or positions, I would say that are open in Topeka, I was very impressed with some of the candidates. I thought, since I've been doing this, this is probably some of the best group of candidates that I've seen so far for this election coming up. There was several of them very good and that's the only thing I've really attended since the last meeting.
Nope. Rick?
I attended last week the Prairie Paws Audit Finance Board Meeting in Gardner. They, of course, you guys get the same reports that I do and, and it's very encouraging to see the, the totals and, and to see that, that we're not in the red. We've got positive months coming out and I commend Melissa on the work that she's done to, to bring the organization to that level. One of the things that we did do last week, we did interview one company to perform a full-blown audit or review, depending on which way we actually decide as a board to go. Probably with an audit and we'll be doing that again next month. Very important piece of the puzzle to, to put together so that Melissa can be even more proactive in going out to recruit donations through organizations and, and try to make that organization as self-funding as possible and I really appreciate that, so.
Yeah, I went to the Richmond Fair and also the Franklin County Fair in Ottawa and I want to commend the Franklin County Fair Board for putting on an excellent fair this year. The Ranch Rodeo was a lot of fun, the Eath Rodeo was a lot of fun and the Travis Marvin, Marvin Concert was great and also the Demolition Derby. So kudos for the Franklin County Fair Board for excellent fair this year. Yesterday, went to the Area Agency on Aging, we had a special meeting and we, from our executive, executive board and advisory board, we voted to not, not to extend our contract with Mid-American Nutrition. We'll have further information on that later.
Our current contract takes us through the month of September, I believe. So definitely will be no cut in services and the, those types of things will continue as they have been. Okay, I also don't have any other comments, I, Joy?
Susan, I've been sending you some stuff on that butterfly mural that you can go down and paint from one to five. They're giving communities a chance to paint, if you guys have a nearby, and then the evenings where they have the display of where they're painting with the light on it, so they have a picture of you.
And, and that building again is on, what is the street there?
Four hundred block is South Main.
Okay, four hundred, South Main, okay.
East side.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Right. Yeah, yeah, thank you very much, yeah, I saw the picture of that and they said what it projected, but I guess projected on there at night with the lights or something, be worth that seeing. Okay, let's see, Commissioner Board reports. We are looking at meeting August one, Board of Health meeting on August one also at eleven o'clock. And the next study session on August sixth, and voting is on August seventh. Nothing else then, I would consider a motion for adjournment.
The canvas is on August the seventh, correct?
Thirteen.
Primary election is August seventh.
This is election canvas for August seventh, okay, I see.
Yeah, we can canvass the votes on the fourteenth?
Fourteenth.
Yeah.
Right, all right, I read it wrong.
Well, it's...
You ready for the adjourn motion?
I'd like to have one.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Clevenger would like to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion to second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.